9:03, let's go ahead and get started. Are we on? Okay, good morning, everybody. Today is Tuesday, April 11th, 2023. The time is 9:03 a.m. I'm going to call this regular term meeting of B County Commissioners' Court to order. We're physically located at the B County Courthouse, Commissioners' Court Room, Number 110, 105 West Corpus Christi Street. And join Reverend Rosindo Ricarte in a prayer. Reverend?
Yes, sir. In the name of the Father, and the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Isaiah, Chapter 41, 10, says, "Do not fear; for I am with you. Do not anxiously look about you; for I am your God. I will strengthen you, and I surely will help you. Surely I will uphold you with my righteous right hand. Behold all those who are angered at you, and will be ashamed and dishonored. Those who contend with you will be as nothing, and will perish. You will seek those who quarrel with you, but will not find them. Those who war against you will be as nothing, and will not exist. For I am your God, who holds you with your mighty righteous right hand, who says to you, 'Do not fear; for I will help you. Do not fear; I will help you,' declares the Lord, and your Redeemer is the Holy One.'" Heavenly Fathers, we come before your throne this morning, Father God, as we put this meeting, Father God, into your hands, Father God. Let us, let us come with gracious heart, Father God. Lord, you are the source of life, hope, and peace, and we thank you for your fresh start and the possibilities of this new day. Your word says that your love and kindness never ceases, for your compassion never fails, that they are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness. We pray for all those who are present here, Father God, especially these leaders that you have presented before, that we have presented before you, Father God. We pray for them, Father God, in the name of Jesus, Father God. We declare victory, and we declare nothing but the best for them, Father God, that you would give them your justice and righteousness, and your wisdom and courage. Help this Commissioners' Court, Father God, to listen, first of all, to you, Father God. Help them also to speak and to amplify the voices of those in our community. We lift up each agenda, department and employee represented here today, Lord. We pray that their agenda will follow your agenda. Thank you for entrusting them as the leaders of the community. In Jesus' mighty name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And the Texas pledge. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the city of Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. Thank you. We've come to the moment in time in our Agenda Item Number Four, which is recognition of visitors. We have a lot of individuals here present today. This is wonderful. We like it, and I hope you guys enjoy yourselves this morning as well. This Agenda Item is not public comment. Public comment is coming up as Agenda Item Number Six. Public comment is an opportunity, if you have something that you'd like to address Commissioners' Court on, then you'll have an opportunity to come up to the dais and, and, and speak to us or speak at us for three to four minutes. But before we get to that, we have a recognition of visitors. During the recognition of visitors, besides me saying hi, I would like to give any visitor today the opportunity to stand up, identify yourselves for our recording, and, and, and just let us know that you're here. There's absolutely no pressure, no requirement that you do so, but if the spirit's moving you to stand up and let us know who you are, please do so at this time.
I'm Shawna Myers, and this is Diane Garza for Halo Flight.
Oh, thank you all for being here this morning. Anybody else?
I'm Rebecca Weaver. I'm with B County Telecommunications.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you for being here this morning.
I'm Tina Molnato. I'm also with B County Telecommunications.
And thank you as well.
I'm Trisha Edwards. I'm B County Communications, also I'm the supervisor with the Sheriff's Office.
Thank you for being here this morning, Ms. Edwards.
I'm Adicia Moller. I'm with Upskill Coastal Men.
Hi, good morning. We look forward to hearing your presentation a little bit later in the agenda. Anybody else? Oh, oh, yes, ma'am.
Buenos dias, y'all, les bendiga. Mi nombre es Berta Ricarte, esposo del reverendo Rico Ricarte.
Ah, thank you so much for being here this morning, and thank you for lending us your husband and his wonderful prayer. Thank you, Reverend Ricarte, once again. Anybody else who'd like to identify themselves? All right, that was wonderful. Thank you. Moving on, Agenda Item Number Five, Commissioners' Court Opening Remarks. Gentlemen, you're going to have to, I've been gone for so many meetings, it seems. Which way are we starting? Who's first?
It doesn't matter. I'm ready to roll.
Commissioner Ollivier Betis, you take the floor, sir.
Good deal. Good morning, everyone. Thanks for coming today. Pretty quiet week, but we were able to accomplish a lot of things today. Before I get started, I'd like to do some recognition. Jennifer Rain, I'd like to recognize her efforts. She's in the process of compiling a status report for all of us here on the court here to basically understand the status of all the grants that are currently happening here in B County. So, so that's a good thing, because I'm a, I need that. You know, there's a lot of, a lot of acronyms get thrown at me, and trying to get some details on status, not, not quite there. Also Natalie Gonzalez with Grant Works. I was able to meet with her this week, and she gave me a great overview of the detailed steps on how we actually get grants through the system and processes. One item that I missed last week was Ray Gonzalez conducted some safety training earlier this month, which is great for the people. Also, out of the records house, Terry Dubowski for helping assist in one of our community members here trying to get some information on property deeds. So, we're doing a good job here, Judge. As far as general information, on April the 4th, I had the pleasure of having a meeting with Michael Betis, our President of Corpus Fawn. Great meeting. You know, he, he's really trying to make a difference here in our community in improving the hospital to make it a better place. He gave me a great overview of his goals and where he wants to go. Reviewed some of the staffing requirements that he's targeting, trying to get to, like number one, he's trying to get a general surgeon, an OB-GYN, and some cardiologists to come to Beville. But he also gave me some of the challenges that he has with staffing. You know, how do we attract good doctors to come to Beville? Housing, of course, is one. You know, contract labor, they have to, which I learned, I didn't realize all the doctors are pretty much contract labor. They really don't work directly for the hospital. And then I also, in fairness to him, Michael, I provided some feedback, concerns that I've been receiving from the community on health care. It's sad to say, but our hospital here has probably had a few failing grades, and I can personally attest to some of those, but it was good for me to share with him. Otherwise, he can't resolve the problem. So, he took the feedback gracefully. There were some articles that came out in 2022. Please feel free to look on the Internet. Google is a wonderful but dangerous thing. But anyhow, they were, we were ranked number 16, I believe. Yeah, as probably one of the worst hospitals in the states. So, something to improve. The good thing, though, is, is Michael is really working hard to try and make this a better place for, for all of us to go. Two things that's going to happen, Commissioners, I'm calling this the Texas Two-Step. Michael wants to come to the Commissioners' Court and present his presentation and kind of let everyone know, get everybody on board, you know, what he's doing to try and, try and make the hospital much better. And then secondly, we thought it would be a good idea to have a town hall meeting and have the community come together and understand, you know, what are the challenges he's running across to get there. So, that's a good thing. As far as presentations, TAC came in this past week, and they presented a great overview of, to our insurance committee. Did a great, awesome, awesome presentation. A lot of good information was, was, came to us. We had our first salary committee, first team meeting, which went very well. A lot of good information got, got passed on along to us. One other thing that's in the works, a while back, I had reached out to Grant Works to see if they could provide myself and also the Commissioners a good overview of where we are with all of our grants. How many dollars have been allocated? How many dollars were spent? What's the percent complete? How are contractors are doing? Are they able to keep up with our projects? How they're being managed? So, then a process of doing that. However, they do not have a database or something to give us that information. So, they're currently working on a database that they're going to give to us, that would give us all the point of contact, you know, of all the work that's being done. The good thing is B County's going to be the first one. We're going to be able to beta test this new program, so, so that's good. Okay, so what's happening local here in Tynan? We had a great team effort by Tech Dot, Vicente Romero and Ray Gonzalez. Were able to fix a drainage problem that existed for many, many, many years. So, now we have a safer road by the co-op there in Tynan. So, that was a, that was a good thing. Soon, hopefully, with, through Vicente, we're going to be setting up a meeting to meet with his supervisor here shortly, but it's about two weeks away. We also provided some assistance to the fire department. They needed a little bit touch-up work on one of the driveways for the new facilities. In Skidmore, this is becoming a little bit more serious. We had several calls concerning road safety, particularly at the intersection of 359 and 181. One resident called is very concerned about vehicles that are actually going into his property, concerned for his safety, his children's safety. So, there was also another call about loose gravel that's at that same intersection. And then another intersection, 359 and County Road 517. I guess the cement trucks that are coming in and out of there are not really obeying the road signs. So, got to work on all those. Plan of action, how do I get past this? Is I'm going to obtain information on Skidmore and Papalodee and Tynan, how many accidents we had at that location. I found out that in order to get that information, I need to file an open records request to the Sheriff's Department to get that information, which I plan on doing. It'll be good information to have and see if it's how bad or how bad it's not. You know, is there warrant a, for Tech Dot to put more signage? Maybe a guardrail? Or maybe even possibly a light? You know, if they have that many fatalities that, that are occurring in that intersection? Don't know. Don't have the answer, but I'll seek out to it. Because of the late response or delaying the meeting with Vicente's supervisor, I reached out to the Tech Dot road engineer, Nick Novasa. He did call me back, but we're going to schedule a meeting later this week to discuss, from the engineering standpoint, what could be done with those roads. Papalodee, we have a big event coming up here on April 21st. Lee, thanks for coming today.
No problem.
They're going to have their annual cook-off coming up, and they're looking for donations. A great thing to do, great fun, great food, great music. Lee, you do a great job putting, putting that on together. So, appreciate all that, all that you do. And that's about it. I know it probably went over a minute from Commissioner DeWitt, but.
Nonsense, Commissioner. Thank you. Commissioner DeWitt?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Judge. I have a couple of things this morning. One thing I'd like to give an appreciation to the court from the folks on Shady Lane. Last Commissioners' Court meeting, we approved a emergency adjustment to the Road and Bridge Administration budget. They're out of money as far as paving roads. So, we approved some emergency money for $300,000. I talked to several people on Shady Lane, and they wanted to tell the court, thank you for doing that. They know that we're going to come into those roads, Lenny Lane, Shady Lane, Bronco Lane. All those are ready to go. We just needed the money to buy the materials. So, that's going to be happening pretty quick. Also, I don't know whether anybody's going to mention it, we want to thank the Lord for the rain across B County, anywhere from two to three inches. Fell over three or four days, and it all went in. I know the farmers down at Tynan, that corn was beginning to kind of curl a little bit. I'm sure by now it's grown a foot since that rain. So, it's needed, and it was perfect. I have some information here on a new bill that's been put in for wind farms. You know how I keep up with the wind farms and solar farms? It's Senate Bill 624 by Colkhurst and Middleton, and I'm just going to paraphrase the bill. Up until now, it's been pretty much the Wild West as far as wind farms have been able to do what they want to. Courts have not had much discretion over them. They haven't had to do environmental impact studies, to my knowledge. This bill requires the Public Utility Commission in Texas Parks and Wildlife to establish oversight of renewable energy projects, that'd be wind and solar. It requires a person seeking to operate a renewable energy generation facility to apply for a permit. And the PUC, Public Utility Commission, will give affected parties, including any property owner located within 25 miles of the property, going to let them know what's fixing to happen. If the, may require the turbines are not within 500 feet of any property line or 1,000 feet from uninhabitable structure. And, and we discussed this once before, but we have some in North B County, that when the wind hits the blaze just a certain way, there's a house it reflects into, and it hits on the wall. Every time the blade turns, it hits on the wall. It's very irritating to the people living there, to say the least. The agencies may require wildlife assessments. We have several endangered species, protective species in B County, horny-toed, Texas tortoise, jaguarundae. There are several in, in, in B County, and up until now, they really haven't gotten the attention that they need. If they determine a permit holder didn't properly remove their facilities, they may come on the project and remove them themselves. In other words, the state will remove it. And it's going to establish a cleanup fund consisting of private contributions, legislative appropriations, and environmental impact fees. And the companion has been involved by Jared Patterson of Frisco. So, they're looking hard at these wind farms. I think they're beginning to realize, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but Texas is, has the largest wind farm in, in the, in the United States. We have more wind farms here than anywhere else. And everything's fine right now, but we don't know what's going to happen 20 years from now when those wind farms start going out and they can't get parts, or they're just going to sit there. So, they're trying, the legislators are trying to get ahead, and we have to appreciate what they're doing. Before we get to the item on the agenda, I want to throw a special shout-out to all the dispatchers. I was, all of us were listening to what happened in Nashville, and I heard a comment that the dispatchers were the, the, the thread, the sinew that held it all together. You guys work behind the scenes, do your jobs, you make sure everybody gets to where they should safely and on time. You know what's going on. You keep your cool, and, and we're going to discuss this in more detail later, but, but I just, I had to come out now and say thank you for what you do, because it really came out when they were talking about the Nashville situation, about how integral the dispatchers were and how important the job is. You may not realize, but you hold people's lives in your hands in the way you respond. So, thank you.
Well said, Commissioner. Thanks for saying that. Appreciate it.
With that said, sir, I'll pass to you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Double check.
Yep, no problem. All right, a little recap of, of last meeting, just to let the constituents know. Tech Dot is still working on the corner of 673 and 351. And they've got to get all their eyes dotted across before they can actually go set up the little poles there, so you can't actually get in that lane and make a right-hand turn. Also, people are living on Oak Lane off of 181. Tech Dot is still intending on going out there. There's a big mesquite tree that the base of it's probably that big. If you're at the stop sign, you really can't see traffic coming from B-Ville towards Skidmore, and they're going to take up that entire tree. So, just to let people know that they are still, that's still in the works. I thank Ray Gonzalez that had a lot of brush pick-up in Blueberry Hill, some road issues that got taken care of. I'm also planning on having a, a meeting with Mr. Betis the 17th of this month with the hospital. And we had a, we had a, an event at the Coliseum last Saturday with this Warrior Foundation, and it was a, it was a success. We, all the money that we raised is going to go toward Driscoll Children's Hospital, and we're going to talk more about that a little while later. Other than that, it's been pretty quiet. Went out on a ride out with the SO, and that's always fun, exciting. So, planning on doing many more of those. And other than that, it's really been quiet, you know? Like you had said earlier, Easter and whatnot, and it's not a whole lot going on, but I'm sure it's going to ramp up here pretty quickly. So, with that, I am done. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you all for your comments. Like I said, I'm going to pass on mine, because I don't really have a lot to say, although I appreciate everyone for all their efforts. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Six, public comment. Are there any members of the public who wish, who wish, who wish to address Commissioners' Court? Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Can you, if you want to come, yeah, I prefer you to come down, and don't forget to identify yourself, and this goes for everybody who's going to speak this morning. Identify yourself for our recording.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy birthday, sir.
Oh, thank you, ma'am.
My name is Kay Reddick. I live here at B-Ville, B County. And I recently had a new home built because my other one burned out. I am here to address my Commissioner, who is not here, because my last meeting, Commissioner DeWitt, informed me that whatever was said in here would stay in here, and I would not receive any type of retaliation or anything else like that. Well, after Commissioners' Court meeting, I got up and left the room in reference to find a restroom. Could not find one, and I turned around, and Commissioner Sammy Freesik was in my face. Did not say anything. You'll have to excuse my language. God, please forgive me. For his look on his face, in his eyes, looking down his nose at me from only five foot three. His, the expression on his face said, "How dare you, you bitch, for commenting and drawing me out in Commissioners' Court." Well, let me go back some. I had my house built. I had my yard cleaned up to where I could mow my grass. I had asked the city to help me remove my property, that stuff on my property, and they told me that they could not because of it not being just brush. So, I asked them what it would cost. It would be $500 to $1,500. I live on a very tight, limited income. And I hunted around, hunted around, hunted around, and I saw on Facebook where Commissioner Lenny and Officer Guerrero cleaned up some places around B County. I called my Commissioner, and the first thing out of his mouth was, "That's the city's problem." I may live in a city, but I also live in his, in his precinct. And I pointed this out to him. And he told me, he said, "I'll drive by your house, and I will give you a return call." Well, some 13 days later, at the Commissioners' Court, and even till today, I've yet to hear from him. I had contacted Commissioner Lenny and Officer Guerrero to see if they could just point me in the right direction on how I could get that rubbish removed from my front lawn, because it was very neatly stacked up on the curb, like I was told it had to be. Well, within five days of one phone call, all of that was gone by Officer Lenny and Officer Guerrero and whoever else helped them. And I, to this day, appreciate everything that they did for me that day. I was at home. I was taking care of my three hearts, known as my great-grandchildren, and they're all four years old. And they are just so adorable. But I was sent a picture of that, and I asked them, still ask them, "What can I do for you?" And they tell me nothing. I appreciate what these two gentlemen did and whoever else helped them. I'm not in Commissioner Lenny's precinct. If I could move my property over there, I would, because I know that he's not here only to help his precinct, but he's here to help the people of B County. And that in itself says a lot. Officer Guerrero, I know he doesn't live in his precinct either, but he was there, because I know where he lives, not too far behind me, and I've known it for years. And I, to this day, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Officer Guerrero, for your help in cleaning up my mess, for I walk out there today, and it just looks fabulous. Thank you. But coming back to my Commissioner, if he is not willing to help one person in his precinct, then what good is he? I don't care if I live in a city or if I live out in the country. Doesn't make any difference. I still live in his precinct. And it's like I told him in the last Commissioners' Court meeting, if his whim depended on my vote, he would not be sitting there. And I truly, truly do mean that. And I've had a lot of people come up to me and comment on my speech the last time, which truly, truly did shock me. They said that I did very well. And some of the other ones came up to me and said that he knows, the Commissioner knows of some of the deterioration of the buildings that they work in. They have mold, they have asbestos, and he seems not to care. Well, these people may work for B County, they may work here in B-Ville, but they still deserve the right to work in a free and uninhabitable, or I should say, a building that they should not fear to go home and take asbestos or the mold home to their families. I know I would. And this isn't my first Commissioners' Court ride. The family I came from, I was in Commissioners' Court at least once every other month. I had a Commissioner that wanted to support me but was scared to. And I did EMS for 18 years. I was also a dispatcher when I was at doing EMS, for I thank y'all for the job y'all all do. I know what it's like. And I was also a business owner. So, I was, plus, I was a mother of two. And it really does help to know that, one, you have a Commissioner behind you that's wanting to fight for you. When I retired from.
You've got 30 seconds left, Mrs. Reddick. I'll kind of let you go on a little bit longer.
That's fine. When I retired from EMS and moved, I found out that ambulance was not there for my county Commissioner, and it broke my heart, for he fought for me for many, many years. And I appreciate your time this morning. And again, happy birthday, Judge.
Thank you.
I hope you have a very. And I hope you have a very, very blessed day.
I appreciate that very much. Thank you, Ms. Reddick. Is there anybody else who'd like to make public comment this morning? We have Mr. Mercer. Uh, Mr. Mercer, why don't you come up and make a public comment, just by way of introduction? Uh, Mr. Mercer's gonna provide us a brief update on a couple of projects that he's working on, uh, for the county. So, Mr. Mercer, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Judge, Commissioners. We'll give you some updates on some of the projects that we've got going on for the county. And there's three projects that we have for the county. First one I'll mention is the emergency generator here at the courthouse. We've got a pre-construction meeting scheduled for this afternoon at 1:30. We're getting that project kicked off. It's been awarded, I think that's what we call an HMGP project, if I'm not mistaken, which is funded through A.D.T.E.M. and FEMA. The other two projects, we've got the EOC, Emergency Operations Center. That project is nearing completion on design. We're looking at advertising that project end of this month, taking bids the end of May, getting started on construction as soon as possible. Generally takes two to three weeks to get contracts signed and that sort of thing after the bid opening. We'll be back among the Commissioner's Court meeting in May to award the project for the EOC. Current budget on that project is between $1.2 and $1.3 million. It's a little bit up in the air. We've got some additional electrical work that's got to be done, because we've got two different voltages on generators, on transformers serving an existing, uh, community building there. And we've got to try to coordinate those two together, but that's nearing completion on that. Tax Office is also looking at, probably the same schedule for the Tax Office of bidding in, in May on that. We've got, I think, the EOC, I think, is ARPA money.
That's true.
Where it's the Tax Office, I think, is local funds of the Tax Office. Some budgetary concerns possibly on the Tax Office, so we're gonna have some alternate bid items. We've got the main area in the back of the building to enlarge the working area, uh, which is the primary thing that's wanted. We've got the, the old bank vault that would like to be incorporated into a workable area that's tied in with the, the other part of the office, which I think, we've got a vault wall, concrete vault wall we've got to bust through to make that happen, which is probably several thousand dollars. That might be something we want to put as an additive altar. Also got a storage area on the front left corner of the building that is for storage, which everybody wants, but we're gonna have, I think, a base bid and two additive alternates to make sure that we have those two things, depending on how much local money is available, so that we can take something out of the project if need be. But we're looking at that project to be somewhere in the neighborhood, all three of those areas somewhere around $295 to $330,000 to get all of that done. The Tax Office main area is $225 to $250,000. Any questions?
We can't do that. I'm sorry, Mr. Mercer, in public comment. I do appreciate the presentation. If you could anticipate any questions, we might have and answer those at this time. We have a couple minutes left.
I hope I gave answers to all the questions that you might have had.
I think you did. Thank you so much, Mr. Mercer.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yes, sir, and again, apologies on omitting it from the agenda. Is there anybody else who'd like to address Commissioner's Court public comment this morning? Okay, moving on. Agenda Item Number Seven. The following items are of an administrative nature. Commissioner's Court has been furnished documentation on each item, and all such items may be acted upon by one vote without being discussed separately unless requested by a Commissioner or County Judge. I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion. You can choose which one you want. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. Now, uh, before I open up the, the rest of the agenda, I'm going to start by moving Agenda Item, is it 11? Yes, thank you. Agenda Item 11 in front of Agenda Item Number Eight. So, without further ado, moving on, discuss and consider action on the following items. Agenda Item Number 11, approved proclamation proclaiming April 9th through 15th, 2023, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Dispatchers Week. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to thank all of our emergency dispatch, not only for your presence here this morning, but for your presence during all hours of the day and night when y'all are executing your obligations. I know it's y'all's job, but the, like, I think Commissioner DeWitt said, the value that you bring to the community unseen is immense, and we greatly, greatly appreciate it. So thank you for all that you do, both at the city and the county and wherever you may be stationed or working throughout these United States. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Now, ladies and gentlemen, we are going to have a little photograph ceremony. I'm gonna sign these. Oh, that's a great idea. I will. I'll read, before we get started, Miss Gant, sorry. Let me read the, on the suggestion of Commissioner DeWitt, let me read the resolution into the record. Bee County Commissioners Court, the men and women serving as public safety telecommunications, 911 operators, dispatchers, and other communications specialists are dedicated to saving lives. National Public Safety Telecommunications Dispatchers Day was initially set up in 1981 by the sheriff in Contra Costa County, which later grew into a national week-long event. These professionals, the unseen first responders, provide critical assistance to all Bee County emergency responders, i.e. law enforcement agencies, fire departments throughout the county, HALO flight, ambulance services in times of great need, and their specialized skills and calm presence in providing critical response information on what type of incident, electronic CAD mapping information to the designation, and radio coordination throughout the incident. At this time, we, the Commissioners Court of Bee County, Texas, encourage all citizens to extend their, extend their appreciation to public safety communicators, also known as our Bee County 911 dispatchers, for their diligent efforts to ensure that help is on the way when we need it most. Now, therefore, we, the Commissioners Court of Bee County, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of April 9th through 15th, 2023, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Dispatchers Week in Bee County, and urge the appropriate recognition whereof. In witness whereof, hereunto signed officially and caused the official seal of Bee County to present on this the 11th day of April, 2023. Followed by signatures. Thank you all once again. Now, photos. Can we get our-
Judge, I'd like to recognize Dave, Dave, for pulling all this together. So appreciate it, Dave.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Commissioner Olivertis. I apologize, Mr. Cave. Yeah, let's give everybody a round of applause. Now, photo. And we'll get Ryan in it. Is Ryan gone? So maybe this time we go from this angle. We want to get Ryan Garza in the photo. Um, I think we can, I'm gonna have Ryan back into that spot right where you are right Ryan's got the coolest chair, and y'all are about to see, he's gonna be the tallest person in the photo. Watch this. How do you want to go? Just right back here. Can you?
Sure.
Can you thread the needle?
He can do anything with that chair.
Well, if you want to mow in the wall, I can make one of those.
Please don't. I'll see how tall you can get.
Yeah. Watch that step. That first step's a doozy.
I gotta quit drinking so much.
Not really. This is slow.
Thomas, hey, thanks for coming.
Need a bigger batter?
Can you hop your own broom?
No, you're good.
That's me.
Lovely to meet you.
Yeah.
He's the one who cleared me.
Can you fit everybody in the photograph?
Get closer to go.
I know. I feel like I'm very unlike.
We can't, I, we can't see the short guys on the back.
The one that's behind you.
Are y'all coming?
Sheriff, you're hiding somebody behind you. You're hiding somebody behind you.
Yes.
Come on, Eric.
Thank you.
Everybody say cheese.
I got you covered. Thank you, brother.
Ronnie, why aren't you in the picture?
You wanna take one over here?
Oh, yeah.
That would get your friend.
Ronnie, come get in the picture.
I'm getting it.
Come on.
Come on, just one. Just one. Each one.
That'd be in the newspaper, say, "You better smile for him."
Right.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, thank y'all. Once again, thank y'all.
I can, I can sure try. They're not amazing. Thank you.
How are ya?
Good.
Hey, you have a nice day.
Hey, thank you very much.
Love you, brother.
Okay.
You'll let me go to Mexico.
Not that way.
And depending on where you go, newspapers, sir likes to show.
Okay. Moving on. These next two agenda items, I think, will move quickly, so I'm not gonna make any other reorganizations of the morning agenda. Agenda Item Number Eight, approved affidavit certifying Bee County has successfully issued a grant payment to Community Action Corporation of South Texas for the 2022 Texas Department of Agriculture, Agriculture Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program Year. Housekeeping, move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Thank you, gentlemen. I am out of practice. Agenda Item Number Nine, approved expo request for Pavilion rental fee refund from the Warrior Foundation for their fundraiser event held on April 1, 2023. Commissioner Lenny, this is your agenda item. You have the floor, sir.
This is what I was talking about in the Commissioner's comments. We had had a fundraiser for Driscoll Children's Hospital, and we're asking the court to refund the rental fee minus the $100 for the electrical. And I think, Robbie, you have the paper, or did he give it to you, Judge, already showing it?
I have, I have this, and I also-
Warrior Foundation event that happened this past Saturday at the Pavilion.
I'll second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to say that there was a lot of other things going on that Saturday. There was a couple of fundraisers going on, the market days. There was a boxing going on all day at the Grand that we weren't aware of. But nevertheless, we raised $400 to take to Driscoll, and Jacob's working on getting a date to do that either this Friday or early next week, so we can actually present in person and do all that stuff, so.
Excellent.
It was good. The next event will be much bigger. We're already planning it. It's already in the books, so, and it'll go to a, a local charity here in Beeville.
This is a wonderful thing that a, a homegrown Bee County native is doing of his own volition and passion, and so we encourage and support all of his efforts. Thank you, Commissioner, for your efforts on our behalf and all of that. And Officer Goodell. And your son. Big thanks to him, this all together, and doing it. All right. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes without exception. Agenda Item Number Ten, presentation regarding Upskill Coastal Bend given by Jeffrey West and Dr. Claricia Muller.
Yes, and Jeffrey West couldn't be with us today. He had another engagement, so.
Not a problem at all. It, Dr., pronounce your last name.
Muller.
Muller, okay.
Yes, and so I, I do have-
Dr. Fuckood, before we, before you start?
Yes, sir.
Uh, this is my agenda item, but this is an outgrowth of the meeting that we had in Centon.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for elected officials, and you guys brought together an unbelievable amount of talent as far as, uh, training, education opportunities for folks in Bee County, and I appreciate you taking the time to come. Uh, we have our, 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 probably our expert here on Bee County as far as needing- It's over, and y'all can talk, but I-
I am a little vertically tilted here, so this is a little wide, sorry. So, good morning, Commissioners. I am Claricia Muller. I am the project manager for Upskill Coastal Bend. Thank you for the opportunity to let me share what Upskill Coastal Bend offers rural communities like Beeville. I do have, on my card, and I can offer, I do, there is a QR code, and so that QR code will, website, pull our clients to gain information about educational and job employment and attainment. And so what we offer is individuals who are wanting to seek any further educational attainment, whether it be GED, um, further, uh, bachelor's, associate's degree, technical certification. And so that website will lead them to further get information and connect with a navigator. So I'm gonna go into that. Our website is extensive with information, and so our clients that will go to the website to get information will get career paths that will lead them to business, education, training, regional news. We have career paths in healthcare sciences, professional skills trades, public service, business, and so that website will lead them to connect to a navigator. We have navigators in six different counties. Aransas, Bee, um, Brooks, Jimwells, Duval, and, um, Aransas, Bee, Brooks, Jimwells, Duval, and, uh-
San Pat?
San Pat. And, and we have not filled the positions in, we're in the process of filling San Pat and Aransas. We have navigators in all of the others, uh, counties, and so we're in the process of filling those last two in Aransas and San Pat, but we have navigators in all of the others. We are fully funded for now, so there is no cost to the counties, there is no cost to our clients, and so we are fully funded through grants. And so, uh, the clients will, uh, it won't be any expense to any of the counties or the clients, and we're here to help. So let me get started with giving you some information. Upskill Coastal Bend is a true partnership, because as you can see, uh, with what I've given you, we are partnered with all of the entities, Coastal Bend College, um, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, Texas A&amp;M Gainesville, Crack Training Center, Trellis Foundation, Solutions, Education to Employment. All of these partners are there to help all of our clients. We work together with them, we connect them with, uh, all of these entities so that we can help the clients get, attain whatever it is they're wanting, whether it's employment, whether it's in education, whether it's a GED. If it's a GED, we connect them with- Sandpatt. And we have not filled the positions in, we're in the process of filling Sandpatt and Aransas. We have navigators in all of the others counties, and so we're in the process of filling those last two in Aransas and Sandpatt, but we have navigators in all of the others. We are fully funded for now, so there is no cost to the counties, there is no cost to our clients, and so we are fully funded through grants. And so the clients will, it won't be any expense to any of the counties or the clients, and we're here to help. So let me get started with giving you some information. Upskill Coastal Bend is a true partnership because, as you can see with what I've given you, we are partnered with all of the entities, Coastal Bend College, Texas A&amp;M Corpus Christi, Texas A&amp;M Gainesville, Crack Training Center, Trellis Foundation, Solutions, Education to Employment. All of these partners are there to help all of our clients. We work together with them, we connect them with all of these entities so that we can help the clients attain whatever it is they're wanting, whether it's employment, whether it's in education, whether it's a GED. If it's a GED, we connect them with crossroads so that they can attain their GED and then further their education or employment. Okay, so then what is our mission? Our mission is so Upskill Coastal Bend Partnership is a cooperative effort of workforce, education, and economic development experts working to drive a long-term system change leading to increased economic opportunities for residents in the Coastal Bend region. All right, so what is it we want to do? We want to take people who we want to further in education or get a better paying job. We want to upskill them, reskill them, reengage them so that they then go back into that community that they live in because in these small rural communities, they're deep-seated, and we want them to reengage in that community and stay, they're going to stay there. They don't want to go off anywhere else. They want to stay there, and we want them to get better paying jobs through an education, if they want an education, or if they just want a better paying job. And then everybody's going to prosper. Their families are going to prosper, their communities are going to prosper, and then we have, what we have done is we have worked with companies so that we can study what is the need. We talked about the hospital here, and we talked about how there may be to better that hospital so that there's better services. Well, what we have found in these six, in these six counties is that there is a need for health services, and so this is something that we offer. We have offered the work towards healthcare, nursing, and so we have strategically found the work towards healthcare, nursing, CNAs, so that we're not finding employment and work in education for people in these communities that there's not going to be jobs for. So we've strategically looked at offering these services for these clients that there's going to be work for them at the end. And so we're not offering them or guiding them in a direction that there's not going to be any work for them. So we are in, in our website, those pathways are for work that's there for them. So that strategically has been done. And so that is our mission. We aim to increase credential completion, increase job placement, reduce social disparity, establish long-term system change benefiting the entire region, the South Texas region. We want to benefit the entire region. And then in the end, we want these counties to be able to sustain the work so that it doesn't go flatline. We want, and for this work to be able to be sustained within the community. Our navigators within the counties offer services to the clients, and the services that they offer, and as I said, we are upskilling, reskilling, and reengaging people. I was at an event in Alice. It was a healthcare event, and so we set up so that we could get potential clients. And the people that stopped by were middle-aged moms that their children had already gone back to school, they're sitting at home, and they, I need something to do for me. And so they were, I need to go back to school. Out of the seven people that stopped by my table for information, they were all wanting to go back in. They were wanting to reengage into education and into the healthcare service. And so it was amazing, and I called them all, and our service says, we will call you within 48 hours. And so they're all getting, one is needing to get a GED, the others are wanting to start school and into that health service. It's a systems change. It's not a one single thing. We have to change. It's a whole system. We have to reengage. We have to, and I can tell you, it's, they're fearful of change, they're fearful of technology, there's a lot of fear. And so it's baby steps, especially with this middle-aged group. The young people aren't afraid of technology, but it's that middle-aged group that we have to, so it's a whole system change. It's not a one single thing that we can fix and say, oh, if we just do this, then we've got it done. And so it's a collaboration process. So this is where our navigators come in. We collaborate with the client, and we offer them a plethora of things. In educational service, we offer adult literacy, we offer English as a second language, we offer associate's degrees, bachelor's degrees, help towards attaining those technical certifications, we help them with their financial aid so that when they go back to school, we're walking them through this process with obtaining scholarships, with helping them attain their GED if that's where they need to go first. You'd be surprised how many people need to attain their GED before they move on. In employment services, if they're wanting.
I'm sorry, ma'am. I'm sorry. Can I ask y'all to go out into the hallway?
Very sorry. If they're needing to, if they're not wanting to go to school and they just want to go get a better job, then we help them with job applications, job preparations, internships, apprenticeships. Maybe they need some soft skill training. We help them with that. We help them with their financial literacy and preparing them with that. Interview skills, resumes, preparing resumes. Or maybe they don't know what to do, and we bring them in and we help them do career exploration so that we figure out what skills do you have, and let's find what maybe you might want to do. So we help them with career exploration. We have worked with building rural community learning systems and have done studies so that we can, again, be strategic and intentional about the work that we can offer within these communities. And so we've studied and we've found out what is it we can offer within these communities and what's available out there. Our outreach is vast. Our continued partnership with all members of the communities and our counties is there, so everyone within the county benefits, and everyone within the county will prosper. We're here. We don't want anything from the county other than you supporting Upskill. That's all we want. We don't want any monies. We don't want anything. We want your support. We want you to help promote the program so that if you know of someone who can benefit from the program, you're sending them our way so that we can help the people within your county and your community, and we can help put people back into education and into work. That's what we want.
I think that's a great thing. I've been practicing physical therapy for approximately 25 years, still currently doing so, and you can't find therapists, and we're constantly, especially nurses, we are constantly putting out ads for RNs and LVNs. You know, you just, you cannot find them. So that's a, that's a big thing to do and look at. Appreciate that.
Yes, and that's one of the big pathways that we are promoting in the healthcare service is the CNAs, LVNs, and RNs. And so, again, we're just, we're trying to get it out, the word out there so that the jobs are available. We just need the people to fill them.
Remember, the newspaper is here. Is there a phone number that people can call that maybe we could have him put in the newspaper as a follow-up on your talk?
Yeah.
Give him a copy of the handout, please.
Yes, we can, I can give them my card. I can give them, I have actually, the Alice Echo asked or submitted, and I was just preparing responses for them so that I could, and so I was doing that yesterday so that I could put some responses, and they were putting those responses. I'm going to put those responses in the paper and so that people could get information out in Alice. And, you know, our QR code is, the website will lead people to, on the website, when someone wants to fill out, there's a little pathway, and if they want to submit their information, you click on career, connect with a navigator. You click on, any client, potential client can click on connect with a navigator. You fill out your name, you fill out an email, a phone number, and it's going to ask you, what are you interested in? Are you wanting to further your education? Do you need a GED? What are you interested in? If you're interested in a job, if you're interested in nursing, and, you know, maybe they don't know, and they just fill out just very generic, and then what county are you in? And if you click that and you submit, and it's going to send it to us, it's going to send it to Mr. West, who's our executive director of E2E, and it's going to, he's going to then trickle it down to me and the navigator in the county, and they're going to get it, and that client's going to get a call within 48 hours. And they're going to get connected with the navigator so that that navigator's going to reach out to the client, and we're going to connect, and we're going to say, okay, how can I help you? What is it you're interested in? What is it you're needing? And.
And the initial contact would be UpskillCoastalBend.org? Is that correct?
Yes.
That's where they would go on the internet is UpskillCoastalBend.org to get to the information you just described. Because this is being recorded. It'll be going out.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Fantastic.
Yes.
Commissioner, thank you for bringing this presentation to court. A lot of great information. It's encouraging to know as we start bringing in new companies, labor workforce is big, and we need to have the people that can actually have the skill set to perform these duties that these companies are going to be looking for. The guidance that you talked about, I think, is awesome. Most people and kids that are coming up through the world don't have the proper guidance, don't know if they want to go to college, don't know if they, what they want to do. So, I mean, just that alone to give them an opportunity to understand, hey, maybe I can go this way, maybe I can go that way. I know I've met some people that are sitting in this court right now. Look out, judges, they're coming for you.
Uh-oh.
But they are, they are upcoming leaders in the community, so I'm pretty impressed in some of the background, some of the education they've gotten. So this would generate a lot more people to do that. So, thank you.
Absolutely, and we're here to help, and that's, that's all we want to do. And we are, I know that the high schools are helping, you know, our high school students, but we're here to serve all the adults that are needing, you know, someone may have left high school and they never completed.
I just have a couple of quick questions. When, when the training is done.
Oh, hang on, hang on.
Two things, point of order. I will recognize people from the floor to speak, okay? Second thing, Mr. Seitz, I always want to hear what you have to say, but you need to. Go ahead. I'm with the B Area Partnership, where we lead Economic Development Agency for the county. And my question is, the training, is it coordinated through one of your partners, like Coastal Bend College? Would they do the training at the school?
It depends. If someone is wanting to go back and get an associate's degree, then we're going to find the program that is best suits them, whether it is through Delmar College or whether it's through Coastal Bend College. If it is a certification, and maybe that certification is through Crack Training Center because it is welding or their electric program, then it's through Crack Training Center. So, again, it's going to, what is best for that client and what is their need? And so it's just dependent upon what that individual is needing, and we're going to find whatever it is they're wanting. There are some employers, if someone is not wanting to get a degree and they want to go straight into the workforce, and we find someone who is going to find them employment, and they're going to train them, then that's the route we're going to find them. So, again, it's dependent upon what that individual is wanting and needing.
Okay, so the second question is, under your grant program for training, would that cover temporary demands that come up? So, for example, we've got a couple of new companies that recently located to B County that are in the process of setting up their equipment. They're going to be looking for equipment operators, and there will need to be some customized training for these folks to operate the specific equipment. Is that something you can help with?
We. To look at maybe partnering.
That's basically what it is. And my recommendation and my motion is to let the committee look at this. Everybody knows exactly what the procedure is now, but there should be some stopgaps in there, some checkmarks, whatever it is. Let that policy procedure, look at it, bring it to the court so we can look at it and say, okay, I think this will work. And I think the committee should put themselves in the place of a, and I call it a losing supervisor and a gaining supervisor, and all the way in between where that paperwork goes to be sure it's correct by the time it gets to the auditor's office and Commissioner's Court.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
No.
I think it's a good idea. Interested to see what they come back with. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes without exception. Thank you in advance to our policy committee for this additional bit of work. Moving on to agenda item number 17, Hurricane Harvey Texas General Land Office, GLO, Community Development Block Grant, CDPG Committee Status and Update Regarding All Committee Activities. I know Commissioner Fedius isn't here today. Commissioner Olivares or Mrs. Cantu, or either of y'all able to provide Commissioner's Court with an update?
Sure. Excellent. So just to make sure I give you the right information exactly, when you say status, just an overall status of just this one? Well, let me, let me, let me go backwards.
Yeah, go. This is Commissioner Duane's agenda item.
I don't know what's going on. I don't know what projects we've got. I don't know the status of them. I don't know what precincts are in, and maybe I'm the only one in the court that doesn't know that, but we, it hasn't been very transparent. I don't know where we are. Okay. So, bring us up to date. I'll bring, I'll bring you up to date. I thought we've had some dialogue around this, but basically, we're in the process of filing for a grant application. It is taking a little bit more time, as you mentioned, you know, than I thought we would go through. We have potentially, still working on, is conducting surveys to determine which projects could actually fall or meet the grant requirements for the LMI. So surveys are currently being done now or in the process of getting ready to be done, and these are in precinct four, your precinct as well, too, to identify these. So some of the, some of the projects that have been notionally identified as one is the Silver Creek Bridge, the County Road 631. Then there was the, help me out here, April, on the Pettis, the Pettis Water.
And there was another, there was another county road, wasn't there? 631 and?
628.
628. And Pettis Water, Tine and Water.
Tine and Water.
Tine and Water. And when, when we first did this meeting, of course, we were against a deadline. Now we've gone on an extension. And so when we went with our grant team, what we thought was a list that was expansive was not. And so we had to tighten it up, and with our Rodenbridge Administrator, he was able to give our committee the direction for the problems that his department faced when we have flood issues here in the county. And so these, these projects are directly from him, from the problems that his department faces and has to accommodate when we have flooding issues here in the county.
We are prioritizing.
Would they have been prioritized?
Projects that you just named, you guys are prioritizing how to do those, and which order?
Definitely.
Here's something that I would throw out, and what, what concerns me, there was a comment.
was a comment just in passing at the last meeting that the Pettis Water project has been put way down on the list. And I don't know what the parameters are on the priorities, but government exists for the health and safety of the citizens. Okay. If, and they're having problems with that water well in Pettis. It should be making 300 gallons a minute, it's making about 30. And if that's been put way down on the list, I need, I need, I've got to report to them as to why. Because you've got several hundred people that live there, you've got a school there, and they're saying, "Well, we understand bridges are important, but what about a community?" So that, that's my concern, is that, I don't know who's making these priorities or how they're being adjusted. And if we're totally listening to a Roden Bridge priority, that circumvents the priority of health and safety for several hundred people and a school. So I would recommend to the committee, you take a look at that, and it could be that the, whoever, I'm going to call it the handler is with General Land Office saying that, that has to move down. That may be it.
I don't, I don't recall...
No, there's, yeah.
Keep those Tine and, and Pettis water systems up toward the top, please.
Well, thanks for sharing that information. I'm not aware of that priority dropping off.
Well, the Commissioner's not here, he mentioned that, that it's been put way down on the bottom of the list.
Okay.
And I, I don't know. It concerned me because we really didn't know, we knew y'all were under a deadline and one thing or another, but always keep in mind, health and safety is primary. And I understand bridges are important, too, but there's bridges and avenues there that are working, but if those water wells go out, we're in a world of hurt.
Oh, yeah, people, absolutely. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I got to go back and look at that. I'm not aware of that. April, you aware of that?
No, no, sir.
I think you heard it also.
I, I mean, there's a list, and it, I mean, at the way bottom, it doesn't mean that things aren't going to be funded in that area or that things haven't been funded because our, um, the dollars that we've received, of course, have been going towards Pettis, and it will, it will continue to go towards Pettis issues.
I understand.
And our other mud, our other mud facilities because all of them are having issues, for sure.
Right. And it, it concerned me when, when I heard it's been put way down on the priority list because usually a priority list, they start at the top and go to the bottom. So be that as it may, I, I appreciate you.
Now, thanks for bringing that up, yeah. And let's also have Tine and Water at the bottom of the list.
Well, you know, and, and either one of those, those are both communities that, uh, several hundred people live there, and if you don't have water, I guess you'll be hauling water, I'll be hauling water.
Can, can I agree with you more?
So, thank you.
Why don't we, uh, why don't, I'll put this back on the agenda or on our next agenda, and, uh, maybe y'all can come back with, uh, not to, to give Mrs. Tan To's office more work to do, but maybe y'all can come back with a spreadsheet similar to the ARPA spreadsheet just to kind of provide us with, uh, with a roadmap of where you're going and so that we, as Commissioner's Court, also can, uh, bless, support, or provide, uh, you know, input into the, uh, the considerations that you guys are, are taking.
Definitely support that.
Yeah.
That's what I've been trying for.
Natalie has that.
Natalie with GrantWorks is our grant admin for this project, so I can reach out to her with more clarification as far as where they are on the application process.
Because it's application that we're...
And maybe see if Natalie can come in and give us, because I, as I recall, and it took a while, Commissioner DeWitt and I were talking about this, uh, last week, communicating with it last week, and it took me a while to kind of re-remember how this all came about. And I remember, uh, you know, at the end of last year, we had to come up with the committee because we had to finalize, you know, our group of, of available projects, just because the turnaround time from, ladies and gentlemen, and those of y'all that may be watching in the recording, uh, these, these monies came from the General Land Office through, uh, the, all the Coastal Bend, or not, all the councils of governments in the state of Texas, of which we're a member of Coastal Bend Council of Governments. And because of some arguments and, uh, issues at Coastal Bend Council of Governments level with respect to how to determine how to split up this huge bucket of money that the GLO gave to the Coastal Bend Council of Governments amongst all of its members, uh, that pushed the timeframe to when they actually told us what the award was for back to the end of the year. So, um, all of, all of the counties and the municipalities that have received these funds have been working under a incredibly, uh, short, uh, timeframe. So we, we do appreciate everything y'all are doing, and I just, again, would echo Commissioner DeWitt's concerns that we want to make sure that we don't even give the appearance of impropriety. So if we can get Natalie in to maybe give us an overview of where they are for us on that process and, and a, a spreadsheet, kind of like with ARPA, I think we'll all be on the same page.
Great. No, I, I'm all for that. I am 100% for that, so.
Yes, sir.
Plus other projects as well, too.
Absolutely.
So thanks for bringing that up, but I wasn't aware, bottom of the list, though. Could have been, I'm not going to comment.
Well, that's good, yeah, no, it's, it's not...
It's good to get it out in the open.
Not real, so that's, that's perfect. Is there anything further on this one? I'm not trying to rush anybody.
No, we're good.
Anybody? Thank you all very much. We don't have any items, uh, for executive session, so we move to agenda item number 18, adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn? I guess not.
We can stay. We've been missing all the others. We've got a lot to talk about.
You have been missing all the items today. You're a little...
I'm learning to be a little bit quicker here in Charlotte here, so...
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you for your time this morning.